Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian. Commissioner Hydeman. Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
We, there's a lawn maintenance agreement for closed properties to be added. MNRTF, Bovier Bay Acquisition Grant Agreement to be added. Vehicle Repair and Maintenance Service Agreements, First Vehicle to be added. Resolution 1513, Authority to Execute Documents Related to Catering Agreement, Blue Water Convention Center, one deletion, landfill, financial quarterly update.
Support that motion.
Okay, we're going to add those items as N-O-P-Q and delete E. Okay, that's actually, we're going to delete item B on there. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Minutes previous meeting? Some of the commissioners may have some of that that are absent, so...
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes 41615 and also the minutes of 5715, Standing Committee Meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, Proclamations, None. Item seven, Consent Agenda A through F.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve items 7A through 7F on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item eight, Reports Standing Special Committees. Going to start with Commissioner McConnell. Anything you want to report on? Mr. Greatop?
No, I'm going to take a pass this time, Chairman Bone.
Commissioner Rushing?
I'm Riley Township. Attended their full board meeting and also the planning commission meeting. There's going to be two new sell tire orders in Riley Township. They might become effective as far as the county somewhere down the road. And also approved a mining permit that's on M-19.
I've got just a couple of things. One, first one would be, I've attended City Marysville Council meeting, Port township and Kimball, and took the, I want to say the packets of information from the convention center with me to hand out to all the council people. And well received, I thought, to put everybody, and there were some comments that came out of that about they would take it back to people they know are in different companies, different, you know, committees and belong to different organizations and pass it on. So, the second thing is regarding the emergency management golf voting proceeds that is going to go to Salvation Army Disaster Services, and I've worked on that yesterday and pretty much rounded it up. We're going to be giving them, as soon as I get the check back from Marysville, about $2152 for that one day effort for us.
Very good. Nice job, Tom. I know you put a lot of work into that, putting that on. Got the opportunity to golf in it this year, and it kills me to admit, and I think Mr. Rushing outplayed Mr. McConnell.
One more here.
Yeah, I know you let him win, and I appreciate it, so. I'll take a pass. Any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, unfinished business, none. Item 11, New Business. Item A, Approval of County Dispersments for April.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for April 2015 in the amount of $20,201,806.54.
All in favor?
Discussion on anything? Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item B's been deleted. Item C, The St. Clair County Library System Closing Request.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the library closing request as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item D, The Adoption of the St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to adopt Resolution 15-12, adopting the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Support.
Jeff, did you want to say anything on behalf of this? I know you were in last time.
Just, just one thing. That's the same mitigation plan that you handed out to all the municipalities?
We will, we, once you approve the resolution, we will go to every community and give a resolution.
Riley has already been talking about it, that's why I was asking.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E, The 2015 Survey and Remonumentation Grant Agreement.
Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the 2015 Survey and Remonumentation Grant Agreement in the amount of $95,584.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. The Goodell's Concrete Work.
This time, I'd like to move to award the concrete work bid at Goodell's County Park to Nolan Construction in the amount of $16,075.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item G, The Maintenance Equipment Trailer Purchase.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the purchase of a Trail King Maintenance Equipment Trailer for Parks and Rec in the amount of $13,461.
Support.
Discussion.
I thought, I thought we had somebody who was going to give them a trailer or loan them a trailer.
I thought Commissioner Rushing was going to donate, as he said he had the same one. Didn't I hear you mumble that?
I just rebuilt mine this last week.
So it's good to go.
I'm holding on to it.
All right, that's Indian giver, I get it. All right.
Hey, man, if he's not going to do that, I'll vote for this.
Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item H, The Michigan Natural Trust Fund Blue Water Riverwalk Phase Two Grant Application Agreement.
I would make a motion to approve the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Land Acquisition Project Agreement for the Blue Water Riverwalk Expansion Phase Two Acquisition in the amount of $118,400.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item I, The 2015 General Fund Child Care Fund Budget Adjustments.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the 2015 General Fund and Child Care Fund Budget Adjustments.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item J, The Cost Allocation Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the cost plan allocation agreement with them, MGT of American Incorporated, amount of $39,000 for a three-year period or term for the 2014 to 2016 plans.
Support.
Carrie, can you explain a little bit? This is more for, I guess, maybe perhaps Commissioner McConnell.
Sure. Annually, the county has a cost allocation plan done, and what that does is it allocates the cost of certain central services departments, building costs, insurance, to all the different funds. We use this for charging all of our grants for those indirect charges as well as non-general fund departments.
So everybody gets their slice in the bag?
Yes. So basically, we have certain departments, let's say IT, where a lot of the costs for our infrastructure are paid from just the IT department, and this spreads the cost out to all the departments that use it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Actually, you know what? I'm backup, that's a roll call. My fault. Sorry, Jane.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Item K, The Website Development Service Agreement for E7 Solutions LLC.
This time, I'd like to move to award the Website Development Service Agreement to E7 Solutions in the amount not to exceed $240,000 for a term of 60115 through 53118.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Just a little, we already discussed this before, this has to do, it's going to actually save the county a little bit of money, and we'll have now a professional service rather than in-house, helping and maintaining our website.
Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item L, The 2015 Security Grant for the 800 megahertz radios for emergency management.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the 2015 Port Security Application for Emergency Management in the amount of $20,603 for the purchase of 800 megahertz radios.
Support.
Discussion. Bill?
The, Jeff, just correct me if I'm wrong here, but if they were, if I read this correctly, if they push your port securities grant together with the dive team's piece, and it forces you then into a match situation, you're going to pull yours back?
Yes, if we're approved and the marine division approves, and that's forced, we will...
You'll pull yours back. Could you bring that back at another time?
We'll just reapply next year.
So it's on a yearly basis that if you go over the certain dollar figure, that you then are into a matching position?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just to make it clear, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item M, The Port Security Grant Program for the Marine Division.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the 2015 Port Security Grant Application for the Sheriff's Department in the amount of $340,198 for the purchase of a 26-foot vessel and associated motor.
Support.
Any discussion? We've got a couple of fellows from the Marine Division here. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item N, The Agreement for Kevin's Lawn Care.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the agreement with Kevin's Lawn Care for the mowing of foreclosed properties for a term of 51415 through 103115, and in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item O.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Land Acquisition Project Agreement for the Bovier Bay Waterfront Acquisition in the amount of $666,000.
Support.
Couple of questions in a little bit to, for Greg. You'll see a lot of the Michigan Natural Trust Fund acquisitions, they will fund up to 76% of waterfront acquisitions. We've used this quite a few times throughout. When I first got on the board, we only had Goodell's County Park. Today, we have the Fort Greshit Park. We've got the Woodsong Park, acquiring some properties over here, working with Anchison's, the Bell River, the park over in Columbus County.
Columbus County.
Help me out some of...
Light station.
Light station. So we use this mechanism quite a bit, and we're fortunate that we have had the ability to match those funds. Part of our Parks and Rec millage, you know, has additional monies that we're able to make that match, so we've been able to acquire a lot of those. So you'll see this mechanism come up quite a bit. Now, pass the, back to you here, Bill. I know there's two different pieces that they've been looking down in the south end of the county.
Yeah, we already have approval on one piece, the 9.2 acres just south of Elginak. You've seen that piece, we showed you that piece. That one was already approved for 74%, 26% match. This is the one that is further to the west, over on the island that we went out and took a look at. That one, they're using a $900,000 figure, appraised at somewhere around eight and a half, 875, and so they're using a $900,000 figure, and thus the 74% would be 666, that'll be the match, I mean, that'll be the grant, and then we would match the remaining 24%.
Yeah, then what will happen with these two is obviously the sellers have to agree, this is a lot of times is the first step of the process. You know, the sellers then have to agree that this is the, and if they don't, then we don't buy, but this is how you go through this process.
First one to show up with a pen in his hand gets the deal.
And, a lot of times, these take quite, this has probably been at least a year now, Bill?
Yeah, good year.
Yeah, takes a little bit of time, too, by the time you go through this process. Sometimes you will see us also use community foundation or some of these other trusts that will actually purchase the property as we will go through the process, because I've seen it take up a couple of year periods sometimes.
Yeah, when there's an exigent circumstances or an urgency for the, for the buyer to be gone, and we can't get it without the land grant trust fund, which takes months, maybe half a year or so, we'll get a third party to buy it, hold it, buy it back from them.
Yeah, so, I didn't mean to get long-winded with this, just trying to give you some of the...
Do they get turned down very often? I mean, if everything is, they have money available?
I honestly don't recall losing one of these grants. I mean, they've got it down to a system and a science that they know exactly how to write them, and they do it the right way. They know, you get different points for doing different things. One of the reasons that I was told that they don't ask for 75%, they ask for 74% is because you're actually asking for less. By asking for less than what you're allowed to ask for, you get more points. So just by dropping 1%, I probably shouldn't say that out loud, but...
Jay had said, to Jay's point, that sometimes depending on how many applications that they get in the course of year, I personally, I've been on the board 10 years, I've never seen us not actually get one funded. Michigan Natural Trust Fund, that is funded of the oil and gas leases, and it actually, correct me if I'm wrong, that thing reached its statutory limit on money, which was like $500 million, you know, so, they, that, that money then produces X amount of dollars every year that goes into this fund.
I think anything over and above that goes into road fixing, doesn't it?
I don't, that's why I know that's been a big point of contention, is that thing produced so much money, it hit us, I'm not even sure what the additional...
The $500 million in balance that stays fixed.
$500 million in endowment space.
Revenue that's generated off of that.
Yeah.
Used to fund the water dispatches.
So, okay, enough of that. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Item P, The Vehicle Repair and Maintenance Services for First Vehicle.
Chairman Bone, I would make a motion to approve the Vehicle Repair and Maintenance Services Agreement with First Vehicle Services for a term 41215 through 41118 in an amount not to exceed $580,000.
Support.
Discussion. David, you sit on the Vehicle Oversight Committee, correct, you're one of the three commissioners?
We don't do that anymore.
You don't do that?
Okay.
That was about, oh, eight months ago.
Okay. Very good. Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item D, 1513, To Execute Documents Regarding the Catering Agreement.
Mr. Bone, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 1513, Authority to Execute Documents Related to the Exclusive Food and Beverage Catering Agreement for the Blue Water Convention Center.
Support.
This particular agreement was a liquor control issue. We received a liquor license, we had to get another document, and we just received the liquor license from the county at, literally, two weeks ago, maybe? It was right to the nth degree. And then, this is just some of the other stuff that we need to, some other language that we need to just clean up in it on our end, so that's what this is all about.
I have a question, David.
Yes?
I have one question. In that paragraph, it is further resolved that they mention the board chairman and the administrative controller, and they put the names Jeff Bone and William Kaufman in there. I think my question is, if they, if your names are in there, and this document is executed, and then we need to call it down the road, and you are no longer the board chairman, or Bill is no longer that, do we then have to go back and change this document? Are we not better off to put the position rather than the position with a person's name? It's a legal question, I suppose, but I...
I guess you ask Gary next time around if we got to make that change, but there's a reason it was drafted, for a certain reason, and, and like I said...
Yeah, I understand the reason behind it. I just wasn't sure about putting names in there and having to go back and fix this if either one of you guys went to leave office.
Yeah. Good question.
He might move up to vice chair someday, and then...
Where would you be?
We'll, we'll pass that, and then we'll bring this on.
We'll have a servant rel report.
We'll bring that back and ask that, or, you know what, administration can just check into it, so be it.
I actually think it has to be written this way, because this way it gives you guys by name the authority to carry out this act.
I'm sure there's a reason Gary did it, but, but he, I'm sure he would, we'll get, we'll get further question on it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Going on to item 12, Our Administrator's Report.
Just a couple of things. Our annual audit, 2014 audit, is wrapping up. The auditors are just about complete with their work, and I should have a draft of our financial statements within the next two weeks. So our final statements will be issued by the end of June. We are starting the 2016 budget process, well, we have started, but we'll be rolling out some numbers to the department heads the first week of June. Still fine tuning a few things. I've been working with Greg Hill a lot on tax estimates and the impact of the elimination of personal property tax, and how those reimbursements are going to flow through to us. So, but probably, our goal is the department has a meeting in June to have some numbers to roll out.
What are we looking, do you know, do you have a, have a target number as far as what we're looking for?
Well...
Too early to tell?
Too early to tell. I actually spent the whole afternoon with Greg today going over the personal property tax. And while the state is replacing what we're losing in personal property tax, we're not actually going to get that replacement revenue until 2017. So we will have that loss in '16, but we're still trying to work through the logistics of the formula, so I can have a good number.
Yeah, at a later date when you get, get that information.
We, our Blue Ways and Island Trail are going to be featured in the Canoe and Kayak Magazine, which is good news. And also, our St. Clair County Health Department, Sherry Faust, was contacted by Pure Michigan and will be interviewed next week to do a TV and a radio spot for the Sturgeon Festival that is going to be on May 30th at Vantage Point. So that's also good news. Another plug for the Blue Water area. We've been receiving a lot of great feedback for the big events or the first events we had at the Convention Center last weekend. Those all seemed to go very well, and have received nothing but positive feedback, so it's good.
Yeah, on that note, I got an opportunity, some of the other commissioners got a chance to go to the best of the best. Talked to a lot of people from around the state, spent a lot of time talking to folks from Traverse City to Mackinac.
Treetops.
Yeah, just, just all of the above. And a lot of the event planners, too, and, you know, the event planners essentially are the ones that their clients hire an event planner, then event planner will, you know, put, put that particular event together for them, and I was really happy with the response, feedback, and the old, as we, and I had a quote on it even, how many people haven't been over to this area before, you know, and this, this was the first time that they were here and didn't know we existed, and how great it was and stuff, so very positively received. Just one of those things that reinforces, you know, you know, why we, why we went forward with that project.
It was a very, very nice affair, very, very well done, very tasteful. The glitz was there, it was just a very, very nice affair. I was in charge of drive-by entertainment, we had five freighters, the last one being a thousand footer, and people were just in awe over standing there in the room, as close to the water as they were with these mammoth freighters going by, and I think it really, it really showcased our place well.
Yeah, big time.
There is still a vacancy on our pension board for the citizen position, so if you know of anybody that's interested, you can give us the name or have them contact administration about that.
Is there a district for that, or is that...
No, I think it's just a citizen at large in the county. Several workforce development offices are in the process of being combined. This will, we expect this will impact us in the next two years. Next month, we will be renewing our contract with the McComb-St. Clair Office. Admin is attending the regional meetings and will be participating in the organizational sessions to make sure our interests are addressed. Admin will be providing a more complete report next month on that. And finally, our summer meetings will be starting soon, and our first one is scheduled at the Convention Center. I believe that one's going to be in June, but the revised schedule will probably come out at the committee meeting next month.
You don't know the rest of the schedule yet?
I don't.
July, we're working on, I reached out to St. Clair or something in July.
All right, so June, at the...
Submit it.
June at the Convention Center, July in St. Clair?
Would that be the committee, the first meeting?
It'll be the full board meeting.
The full board?
Yeah, we will have the schedule for you at the committee meeting, though.
Okay.
And next month, you will be getting the landfill progress report update that was taken off the agenda, will be next month, as well as an update on the airport.
Actually, one thing on the landfill, forgot to report on it. Myself and Howard, with our lobbying firm, had a meeting over in Lansing on Tuesday with the DEQ, four different people, three different things that we had talked about.[1665.21] people, three different things that we had talked about. One of the interesting things that, I guess, that we weren't aware of, and didn't know it was Matt, when the research and development, the RDDP bill, it's 12 years on that?
Yep.
And when we did the additional bioreactor, that restarts the clock on that RDDP, so there's now another 12 years on it, so every time you expand, it, it was, it's kind of interesting how the EPA views that, so we were, had a concern that, okay, we're in year seven now, or year five, we've got seven more years to go, because what we're trying to do is get that to a, let's call it a best practices, but a recognized practice for that.
That wasn't made real clear when we were in Washington, when Howard and I went there.
No, no.
Bouvier would restart.
Yeah, 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 and, and it was, and truthfully, Matt wasn't aware of that either, it was, they, they did a better job of explaining that portion of it to us, so that was, that was good news, because we, like I said, particularly had that concern. Couple other things that, that we were talking to them about, but it was a really good meeting, probably the big thing that came out of there, they, states recently formed a, called a solid waste committee, and they have, it's either 13 or 16 different individuals on that, and we had talked to them about coming over and making a presentation and bringing that committee, it's a statewide committee, to come out and take a look at the landfill and the bioreactor. It's tough sometimes, because when you, we talk about all these things that we're doing, there's nowhere else you can turn to in the country and say, you know, there's five of them over here, there's six of them over here, come look, I mean, they know what we're doing, they know things are going well, but I think having the committee touch it, feel it, see it, will, will be, will be big for us. 'Cause there's still the old, you know, landfills in Lansing aren't the most favorable, 'cause some of the things that others do are, you know, they're just, they're not, they're not landfill enthusiasts, you know, so be it. So, uh, do I have a motion to receive administrator's report?
So.
Support. Favor?
Aye.
A miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous business that come before us this evening? Seeing none, receive and file.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to receive and file packets that were sent to the commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented tonight.
Support.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.